Where am I?
Okay. Work session, we have Corin, Angel.
President.
Amanda and me.
President.
Okay. Cam, do you have anything? Are these be taken care of during this work session?
No, I just have the budget form one for everyone to review.
Okay. Amanda, what you got? Over there too here, my paperwork, there you go. Thank you ma'am. Should consist of two sheets, three sheets. The budget hearing is?
It's workshop now.
Yeah, it would.
It's Friday at 2:30.
Okay. This Friday?
Yes.
Oh, I expected a time on that.
2:30.
No, wait, what is?
What?
How long?
I think they're like thirty minutes, twenty minutes, thirty minutes.
So up at 2:30. And that's the one you're doing?
Yes, it's with just me and the computer and the DLGF.
Alright.
And I'll probably be here.
And our next meeting, who does that say it is?
September the 4th. It's on Thursday and that will also be our budget hearing.
Were they the weakest though?
Thursday. Yeah, I had another back so we can get started.
We need a work on budget. Page two. Page three, page four. I left the page four off of somebody's paperwork.
I have one, two, three, four.
So for the budget year 2025, we're gonna have it.
Twenty twenty-six?
Twenty-six, yes, thank you. Time council will stay the same, right? Sorry's and wages. Court treasure's gonna be the same. Extra.
You want to shift? You want to shift or? Bring some attention, mention the training?
No.
What was the question? It's not in her. I said, are you gonna get extra for training since it's tech one and not in your job description?
No.
Self-security remains the same, Medicare. Unemployment, will be that the same? Office supplies, operating supplies, returning.
Is my copy over there?
Yes. And mosquitoes, are we, we doing okay at 2,000?
Last year we were okay with it. I don't know, we don't know for near a year.
Well.
How much was the upper lesson?
Well, we do other things out of that fund. It's a contractual services fund. Let me look at last year.
What you did here, right? No.
Got it right after the show, it wasn't great.
Your grandson come down with that?
He goes along for eight hours. Okay, so we are at contracting, so.
Yeah, contractual services.
Question mark or check mark?
It's a, she's checking on that, we go ahead down. Policeage is gonna remain the same.
Police for nothing, seventy-six, seventy-four, seventy-six.
Seriously?
Yeah. We got.
Do you have enough in that fund though?
Um, I bought a bunch of stamps. Last year before they went up.
Yeah.
I'm not sure where I'm at with those, but.
Alright.
I think we'll be alright with that procedure though.
Well, it's in a 300 account, if we have to. Use a little bit maybe like from travel or advertising, whatever.
In 2024, we spent forty-six hundred with city pest control.
How much?
Forty-six hundred.
Oh yeah, not, less than a dozen, then that should be fine, right?
Well, there's more, there's other contractual services. Down that, we're finishing home.
Let me just try to report on that G O.
Okay. Let's see. Travel.
Um, I've not been traveling simply because I've just, when I'm just somewhat, I typically go there for multiple reasons, so I don't charge any travel expense.
Like making deposits. Telephone's the same, advertising is the same at 2,000. Insurance is the same. Bonds gone at four hundred dollars.
How many bonds are we at, huh?
We, uh, clerk treasure and all that.
Of course.
Um, we had to increase my bond, the loan.
Got that done, cause it's gotta be up, I mean, on twelve hundred, didn't I?
What?
There's only twelve in there for four people.
It's a, it's a blanket bond. That covers us.
Council has a little bit, it's a little bit on.
Yeah.
And this is just for the council?
No, this is for the council, clerk treasure.
I think where her question's coming from, as you said, it's four hundred, is that per person?
Oh, I'm sorry, you raised, I'm sorry.
No, she said it increased, I added four hundred dollars.
Yep. Wish we should.
For the anticipated.
She was saying thirty-four hundred, yeah, you increased the total of four hundred, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Last year for contractual services, we only spent fifty-three thirty-seven. Um, we did not have an additional month of mosquito spray that we thought we were going to have. But the way this year's going with the long winded news, we will probably see that this year and even more maybe next year. So I think ten thousand's calling it the same.
Okay, so we leave it at ten thousand. Okay.
Thank you ma'am.
You're welcome. And I pulled up the whole report for the year, so I can answer any amount, so for expenditures for.
Okay. Yeah, back to page two. Travel, travel, where'd we get to?
Electric.
Electric. Same the same.
Did I leave it the same?
Yes.
Last year. We only spent three thousand and three dollars and twenty-four cents on electric. There was a rate increase this year and there'll probably be a rate increase next year.
Okay.
So probably four thousand this year, probably five thousand next year, but I don't know, we're allowed to use any of that to help offset the water utilities electric? Because.
I don't see how. Unless we wanted the money and they pay us back. I'd have to ask the lawyer. I don't know, I know their electricity bills just outrageous. Yeah.
It was just a thought.
It is a thought. Yes. Gas. Can you drop the gas down? Let's see, we've dropped it down five hundred dollars.
Yeah, where you've been paying it out of public safety.
Oh yes, okay.
I hope I had that in public safety. I hope I remembered to do that.
Okay, we'll look at that. Water. Four fifty. Increase it to fifty dollars. Since we had water rate increase.
I'm not, I'm hoping that'll cover it, what is it right now, thirty, seventy, times ten percent, times twelve? Four oh five twenty-four, do I have four fifty in it?
Yes.
We should be good.
Yes, okay.
Let's stay out of the leak.
Have we come under repairs now, if that might hurt?
Yeah, we, yeah, we get, yeah, at least get repaired, but we still have to pay the bill. Repair maintenance is the same at a thousand, street and alleys.
We usually just put a hundred in to keep it open.
We do, we do, I don't. I can't even remember the last time we used it out of the general fund. Software upgrade, a thousand. Is that still gonna be enough?
Um, we actually have it in the CCI fund.
Okay.
So that's just a buffer for anything that goes over.
Exactly, okay.
What we can afford in CCI.
Good deal, okay. Hydrant mail, six thousand. Instruction and training, we'll leave that at a thousand. Subscription and dues. Up to one hundred dollars.
Yes, the, some of the aim keeps going up every year.
Yes, they do, okay.
It's hard work to keep up to date with new people.
Promotion of the town, donations, thousand. Building upgrade, two thousand. Other improvements, two thousand, the same. Office equipment machinery, two thousand.
I don't know that there's anything that's specific we're wanting, but. I don't, I don't know if there's anything, I hate to not appropriate.
I agree. I agree with you on that. Okay. That brings the total for general fund, it's seventy thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars.
That's the total last year.
Seventy thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars. And then I've got a pencil in here of seventy thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five. So, anyway. Okay. Next. Our central Rosen streets, the very bottom, if I upkeep for street signs, it's two thousand. And then repair and maintenance, street and alleys, two thousand dollars. Property tax, there's none, so.
No, there will be, the only two accounts, funds we have property tax cap are gonna be general and CCD, and I don't have that plugged in.
Well, the total says twelve hundred.
Twelve, twelve, twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand.
Yes.
Yes.
Twelve thousand. And then. Repair and maintenance, street and alleys, it's forty thousand.
So we need to find out if we can get a grant again next year to finish the paving.
Right. And from what I was looking at, it's maybe due in October. I really have to look into that, get that taken care of. And then, that's forty thousand. And then.
Can we use the grading that was already done this year on streets? Where they assessed them?
You mean the loft area?
Oh.
The, where they go in and grade the roads and give them values?
Uh, I will be doing that and like the ones that I've done this year, they're all a ten. And I will reevaluate the ones, like a third street, Mulberry Street, all those will be reevaluated.
Right, cause third needs paving on the.
Third's terrible.
West side.
Right.
And Mulberry's pretty bad.
I have to do all that because by December, the first, I have to have the reports in in order to can keep our. Information grid for the grant.
That's why I put forty thousand in there in case we wanna do that.
Right. Then we, we still have ten thousand dollars though in, in the local Rosen streets.
Right.
So that, that's another, okay. Moving on, CCI.
I have the computer software to three thousand, I'm not sure that we're gonna need it, but we might have to twenty thousand and, or sorry, two thousand and forty dollars this year, so I don't know what next year's going to be.
Okay, and we have zeroed out the streets and alleys on the CCI.
We, we have, yes.
Okay.
If you guys want me to throw something in there to keep that open, I can do that. We've never used it.
Right.
And if we leave something in there that we don't use, then it affects the amount of money it shows we have available for the following year.
Exactly.
And I could even drop down that computer software as twenty-five hundred. And maybe feel comfortable with a buffer in the general fund. You guys wanna do that?
Okay, we've, as you stated, we've never used the CCI fund for streets, alleys, maintenance on that.
Right.
Then. I would agree to leave it in April. Cause it does affect that we're gonna budget.
That wasn't my question.
Okay, question?
The computer software this year, our fee for Q fund was two thousand and forty dollars. So I don't know if we really need three thousand in that or not, or if we just should do twenty-five hundred, like this year we have two thousand, so I paid two thousand from the CCI and forty from the general. Cause once that money's gone in TCI, it's gone, we barely.
Yeah.
We don't have a lot of income on that.
If you're comfortable dropping that to three, twenty-five hundred, that's okay.
Okay.
Okay. Twenty-five hundred for my item, three ninety-six. Property tax, moving on, and that drops that to twenty-five hundred. CCD, streets and alleys, a thousand. Repair and maintenance.
I think we need to address third street again. That wraps around two-four street. We gravelled it, it's grass again.
Oh.
People, so I mean, do we have enough funds in what we're budgeting to address that?
I don't know.
Uh, cause people have asked why we did third street, that everybody thought John Deere Hill.
Mm-hmm.
Why we did it versus the other side.
Right.
Why we paved John Deere Hill and why we gravelled third street?
Correct, yes.
Um, we paved John Deere Hill with grant money, you can only pave, pave roads, you can't pave over gravel.
Yeah, it's grant money, we can't use it, so.
Well, it's all grass now on third street, so that, I know we can adjust this in a later president meeting, but I just wanna keep that in mind while we're doing budgeting.
Yes, yes, keep, yeah, keep that in mind, yeah.
If we were to wanna have it paved, we need to have it surveyed.
Well, I mean, do we have the money that we're allocating enough to gravel again, or spray it and gravel it, create and gravel it?
Maybe.
Street and alleys.
We'll, we'll address that, yeah, I'll take it. Okay. Is a thousand dollars okay, Cam, or were you talking?
CCD is taxed, taxed dollars.
Yes.
Our proceeds I believe is point four eight six this year.
Yes, it's.
And point four eight six next year.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I, we usually put a thousand dollars in there just to put something in there.
Exactly.
And we're trying really hard enough to spend any of that money.
Okay, we'll just leave it that way.
If you'll let me do that, um. It looks like we're probably gonna get possibly a hundred and fifteen dollars next year in that time.
Okay.
So there's really no point in spending anything, you know, until we figure out what project we wanna put it towards, we can put a thousand bucks in it, we've put a hundred bucks in it.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, whatever you guys wanna do, but the intent is to not, not spend it.
Right.
But if something happens and we need a thousand dollars instead.
We've got it, so we'll leave it at a thousand. So CCD fund total is a thousand dollars, we'll leave it as is.
And I don't know what the property tax cap impact's gonna be on it, so I, I think we'll pull that in Friday at a.
Probably.
Query.
Probably.
I haven't, um, I thought I put those in one spot, but damn it carried over yet.
Okay.
I think that happens at the meeting.
Oops, I put that wrong. Alright, next one. Economic development. Did you hear consulting services, professional, zero? Other charges and services, three eighty-three, the loan payment for the water utility at sixteen thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars.
I believe that's our exact loan payment due times twelve.
Okay.
I don't know if you guys wanted to do more than just our flat payment. That's not spending any money out of the water utility. And again, once that money's gone, we don't replenish it as fast as we.
I know.
Are spending it.
And the way you got it right now, it's a funny thing. At least you times it times twelve.
I expect next year we're going to get about fifty-two hundred dollars in there, so if we're gonna be spending it. Three times as much as we have coming in, it'll deplete it fairly quick. But, you know, our goal was to try to knock out that loan pretty quick, so.
Right, right, okay. Sixteen five eighty, you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
And if you want me to pull a balance, I can tell you what our balance is if you want us to exhaust it next year. If you prefer that.
I don't know, Cam.
I'm just concerned, like right now, we don't know what our electric bills are gonna look like, cause our tons are running low on stuff.
Right. I believe that it's sixteen five eighty.
So. If we do sixteen five eighty, then at the end of next year, we'll have less than, um. Ten thousand dollars in the account at the end of 2026. So in 2027's budget, we won't be able to. Ask for that much money. Depending on what they're giving us, so this year's probably the biggest ask we have, if we wanna deplete it, we can, but if we wanna hold on to more money for the next year, and if we need extra money, we need to pay from the water utility.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Public safety. Our department office supply is zero.
We still have all the, I believe stamps and everything I've got before.
Okay, we're still. Okay. Our department repair and maintenance, twenty-five hundred. Our department insurance, five thousand. And that's, okay.
Now we're at five hundred dollars?
Yes, all of our insurance has gone up, right.
Repair and maintenance went up a thousand, okay. And then that went up five hundred. Gas and heating. Fifteen. Clothing still a thousand. Zero, police agent, warrant officer, raises to ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, I'm not sure we're gonna get that much next year, but.
I know.
You know.
So. Yes, keep those, you guys. So.
Are there any projects or, I know we keep saying that we need to work on this bathroom, and we do.
We do.
I don't even know if we can get the old water heater out of the door.
Well, it went in there, didn't it?
The doors used to open to the outside.
See, I was thinking that water heater went in whenever this was redone. At the time, there wasn't a water heater in there, like.
I just have to measure it and find out.
Yeah, yeah, you're correct, Cam, the water heater is short.
Even if you can get hot water for your hands, what are we really getting the hot water heater for?
That's what I've been wondering, I don't know.
Well, when it's twenty below zero outside, you have to wash your hands, it'd be nice to, after you shovel the parking lot and scraped everything and stuff like that, and then if we ever have company, we really should have people, I, I don't ever turn it on, cause the water's so nasty, I don't know.
Yeah, the water heater's bad, it's.
The last time I had it turned on was for an audit we had, like, twelve years ago. Ten years ago, nine years ago.
Smaller water heater.
They're, they make them smaller and more efficient now.
Mm-hmm.
And cheaper.
Mm-hmm.
We should be able to just pull that one out and put another one in and.
Should be able to.
Sink, and I think we need to replace the toilet.
It's.
I think we just kinda need to gut it and look and see what's there, I think it's just a cinder block room.
It is. The water heater's a hundred and ten?
I don't know, I think so.
Okay. Uh, we need new faucets on the sink or a new sink?
No, we need a new sink.
Okay.
We were prepared to do that this year, but I, I just don't have time to do it.
I think it's been a hard year for the body cam.
So the only change might be if we want to. Reduce computer software, if we decide we want, I mean, does it really matter either way, if it gets twenty-five hundred or three thousand?
I don't, I don't know, probably not.
Okay. Um. So I'm good to go with that for the budget workshop?
Yes, so far, yes. Under, you want that under opening business, about fifth street?
Well, we're technically at the, we're in our work session.
I know, I just wanted to make a note of it.
It would be new business.
Yeah.
Should be that page.
Yeah.
Who would we get to spray it? How would that work?
We need to spray weeds. We've got one of those. Just like the compactor, that sits on our dock.
So we just need to get the chemical?
Yeah.
You already had that survey, didn't you, Angel?
Third Street?
Oh, my property lawn, yeah.
We already know where the corner marker is pointing. Did he put a marker or a flag?
Flag. But it's never moved.
Oh, really?
Yeah. It's staked in, and we just spray it around, and now it's never gonna move.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think it's the standard width all the way down from the highway to, I mean.
Terms. It, according to the guy that surveyed it, technically, his garage is over on the road. 'Cause he had to measure by what of the road, and he said his garage is technically on the road. So that would become an issue if we really wanted to survey it and enforce and pave it.
Hmm.
And like I said, it's not that anybody really uses it. It's kind of a personal drive, but when we're talking about maintaining roads, I just kinda wanted to keep that in mind.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be, I'm thinking we're gonna have to do ourselves.
Yeah, I'm not sure what it would cost to do an initial paving on a, something with a gravel bed.
Need a.
Last time we did that was Union Street back in nineteen ninety.
Is that the only road we got gravelled in?
Eight.
Walnut.
No, um, First Street is gravel. And Walnut Street, from Second to First Street's just about gravel, but it was paved at one time.
I'm sorry, Walnut from where?
First Street, um, when you come down Second Street, from the highway.
That's correct, fine, um.
There's the jail.
Yes, it's paved.
Yeah, it's paved, but as, it's.
It's, it's, it's all about five feet wide. I mean, it's probably, it's not, I'm not sure how wide it is. It's barely wider than my truck.
I know, it is the most narrow street. But First Street is gravel. I don't know if it's ever been paved on. I don't know. I mean, there's seen it paved on.
Are we doing free advertising?
What are you doing, what?
Okay, advertising.
Me? No, I'm this way, so I don't have to, um, have everybody check me out while I'm getting a drink. 'Cause I've got to, I know. I don't think you can read the numbers, I can hear it, the numbers.
I have to be able to hear you. We have to be able to hear you.
You can't hear me, can you?
I can't. I did them.
You have to, or talk louder and hear me out and stuff.
Yes, I'm listening.
You just have to mark up on me. Yeah, I hope you like it.
It's usually been under this way.
Have you guys reviewed, reviewed everything so far, the bank statements and claims?
Yes.
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 I speak up, Mark Thomas.
Please.
Yeah, I'm sitting on the phone there. I'm sitting on the phone there, so I can pull my shit down, I'm sitting up. I got covered here. I thought I was covered. Oh, my gosh. Now it's like, I have to wait now, right?
Mm-hmm.
Do, do you want to break?
No. We had to keep recording and.
Push that before I mess.
Well, we can still address certain concerns, you know.
Do we have other budget issues?
Anything you can think of?
Other than we don't have nothing.
Dude. I've been thinking about, um, if we're gonna get in, like a water clerk, deputy clerk, something like that. We may look at our salary ordinance, because what's, what's the hourly?
Twelve fifty.
Twelve fifty.
Yeah, well, no, since I worked here. That's like ten. Doesn't make it too long.
It used to be ten.
Yeah.
You have to judge your hoops to raise the, I think we had to advertise the salary ordinance and all that to raise the rates, didn't we?
Um, I don't know, I was gone by then, I'd moved to ten, you.
I think you always have to advertise the salary ordinance. But it doesn't go in the newspaper, it goes in the.
Since you're the one getting all the phone calls and emails, you had any complaints yet? With water?
No.
Hopefully, they just want rubbish. Hit him.
I tried to complain about anything other than, uh, just people curious, wanting to know what was going on.
Mm-hmm.
But no complaint.
Yeah, like, certainly had it there, probably three or four days.
Yeah, yeah, I can see it.
Yeah, they started as soon as day broke into the, the day ended.
What?
Soon as daylight hit, they started.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, 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 they're under pressure, you know, to get that done, you know, and which is, then water has, once they fill that up, the water has to sit, and water has to be tested for bacteria and stuff, so, I mean, it's a waiting game. Oh. That's for you. And I'm.
I got one of these.
Did I already give you one?
No, I haven't, no.
Whenever.
Man.
The man, you know, whenever, you know, you.
Can I join, a minute?
Yes, we are, we are live. Come on in.
Yes. Oh. Uh, whenever you take care of these, I need to know, so they go in my reports for the, um.
Are we live on Facebook?
Yes, yes.
We're live.
So.
Just, what, what's your name?
Lika Sykes.
Hello.
So I'm sure you've all heard of the capital improvement plan that we have to do for the trustees and the township trustees.
Yes.
So Senate Bill One passed. I don't know exactly what all is in it, but we have to do a capital improvement plan. Still, it just comes to my mind.
For the township.
For the township, yes.
Right.
So the way I understand it is I have a rainy day fund.
Mm-hmm.
And I have a township fund. Starting, well, it's been, supposed to have one in place for a couple of years now. But the end of twenty-six, they'll take thirty percent if we don't have it, have a plan in motion of what we're going to spend that money on for capital improvements. That thirty percent will go to, I believe they called it road infrastructure budget, something like that.
For the county?
Well, it can go to the town.
Is that right?
Yep. It can, or it can go to the county. The town can access it, or the county can access it, but then I would still, I would still have ultimate approval, obviously. The way I understand it. But my thought was wellhouse, maybe roofing.
We, we are, our insurance has notified us that our age of our roof is beyond insurance.
Okay, so.
Both of them. Yeah, they're needing.
So I cannot access that money until twenty twenty-seven.
Wow.
So, but I have to have my budget, my plan, in approval by September thirtieth to twenty-five. And then, yeah, so I'm running out of, but I, I can just say, hey, the way I understand it, I can say, hey, you know, phase one, I can do it in phases, but more or less I have around, I think, eighty thousand roughly, that if we don't utilize it, then it will go into this infrastructure.
Hmm.
Plan.
Yeah, infrastructure.
And I would like to utilize it in the township, whether that be in town, whether it be, you know, the wellhouse.
So where, where could I find this information? Can you submit to me?
I got a copy, I got a, I'd have to take through my emails, but I've got a printout of the Senate Bill One. And Senate Bill One is what passed. And there's about five hundred pages of this stuff.
Probably, right.
And, but the way I understand it, more or less, as long as it's being used, my, my plan is to use all eighty thousand dollars of it.
Right, yeah.
So that way, we're not giving it to the county to say, hey, we wanna pay you this road out here. That's still my township, you know, and I don't, I don't care to, you know, help the roads or whatever, but.
Yeah, it'd be nice to place, pave the road out here to the cemetery.
Yeah.
'Cause we paid, if we paved clear, clear around there, and then that, that strip, that would be nice, other than that, because that's a.
Which, that's still town, right?
Nope.
All the way out.
We paved to the end of.
Our corporate limits, right.
I think it probably went a little past corporate limits.
It did, so here's the corporate limits, here's the road, here's the cemetery, so it's a.
Technically, to that, probably, though.
You're right.
Thank you for pop that, Bill.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I know the roof, I know that wellhouse is built, you know, but I was thinking, you know, if we.
Right.
I think the way I understand, I'm still getting some clarity. The problem is that Bill passed, nobody know, and there's not a whole lot of clarity, 'cause everybody's been in budget meetings. And so we're still kinda deciphering everything, but I would like to so I'm putting, at least putting in one of the phases, you know, wellhouse, windows, arena.
For the public, that was your cell phone number you handed him?
Yeah.
Yeah, the cell phone, email.
That's an email.
Yeah.
You want my cell phone number?
No, I got your cell phone number.
You did?
Yeah.
Everybody does, yeah.
I know where you live.
It's public record.
It is public record.
Um.
Oh, boy.
We have two pump houses down there, and both of the roofs are older than insurance whatsoever. That's where we're at. It's affected our insurance this year and last year.
My thought was to probably split it up, split that money up in three phases, you know, whether it be, and I think to, to my understanding as well, is I don't have to spend that money, like, say we, you know, phase one is
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven thousand. If we don't spend it, we can roll it.
Right.
To the next year, you know, say we, you were getting quotes, and we're, we just have to have something in writing showing, or I don't get my money as well, so.
You just need a plan.
Just a plan, yeah, so.
Capital improvement plan.
So, is this something that we all four went to sit down and, and discuss?
Yes.
Before September, obviously, way before September third.
Well, I wanted at least, I actually was on the phone with Jimmy Pickett, and he was like, well, they're having board meeting tonight, and I'm like, oh, this is perfect timing, so.
So we have a budget meeting September fourth.
See, I have one September eighth.
Do we want to get together that evening?
Well, we have our work sessions before the meeting, five to six.
Okay.
And we can discuss, anytime we discuss anything together, we have to post it.
Record, yeah. I have to do the same thing.
So, I mean, if you're available at five Thursday, September fourth, we'll all be in here, and we can work on it then.
We could, could you?
Uh, you have to say, well, don't do that.
Oh, okay.
My meetings are very short and very quick.
Where are your meetings held at?
At, at my house, seventy eighteen South Sikes Road, so, and you're more, I mean, it's a public meeting.
I've crashed Jack Johnson's meeting.
Yeah, you're, you're.
You remember.
So.
And you, I'm sorry, you said your meeting is when?
September eighth, at six P M. So that's my adoption meeting, and then.
Yeah, that, ours is, yeah, yeah.
And then I think my approval meeting is the thirtieth.
Ours is the tenth.
Twenty, I gotta move down.
Right.
I think it's twenty, twenty days apart, twenty-eighth, maybe.
Right, but you have to have.
Just by the thirty.
Go to get this up to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
It's the same thing we went through whenever we were starting to get county edit money. In order to get the money, we had to come up with a plan, so in order for you to not lose money, we have to show a plan.
I have to show a plan, yes, so.
Yeah, yeah, I would say if you're available at five o'clock on the fourth.
And all we're, all do, we're still kinda digging through, deciphering everything, figuring out, figuring out what we can use it on, what we can't.
And another thing, our water utility, we just are investing, I, I don't remember how much we're investing, just under two hundred thousand dollars, just for
Painting.
To remain compliant with.
D P A, you said.
I D E M.
Yeah.
So we have a lot of other projects that the water needs to, water utility needs, we've got.
And, and like I said, I mean, it may be something, I mean, I, it, it don't make a difference to me, obviously, you know, even people with Newberry part of my township, so.
Right.
As long as the money goes to good use, it, it's fine with me, so.
If you need a list of ideas, we can provide some ones.
Thank you.
I try, I try to help what I can.
We can, we can come up with ideas and give you some ideas.
You guys might kick some ideas around. I mean, like I said, I'll probably split it up into three phases, 'cause I know it has to be a minimum of three.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, it could be five, it could be ten, but we just have to show, like, like I said again, to my understanding, I just have to show that we have something in plan, so, 'cause I think, I could be wrong, but I think there're kind of, there's other townships or other municipalities that have lots of money that they're just hoarding.
Mm-hmm.
And I think they're trying to kinda utilize some of that, so. But, yeah, that's something, I mean, you guys can think about, talk about, I mean, we can, and I'll do, like I said, I'll do some more digging into it and see what we can, can't use the money for, but.
If I see any webinars or anything come up anytime soon from Amy or anybody like that.
There was one, the D L G F had one last week, I believe, that they talked about it. I have not had time to watch it yet, but yeah, it was D L, D L G F, I think, had one.
What was it on?
The Senate.
D L G F.
Senate Bill?
Yeah.
The Senate, okay.
Yeah, it was D L G F or Township, I wanted to, but but that's kinda where I'm at, so that's something to kinda keep in mind, your mind, that we have some money accessible.
Is there any improvement projects with any of the cemeteries within the townships, you know, the township, retaining walls or any structural stuff that needs to be done?
That's, so I have cemetery money for that.
That, that will.
Is, is the cemetery outside of town there on Fourth Street, is that a private cemetery?
That is.
So it doesn't receive? Okay. That's what I was told, that's what I was asking you.
Yep, so that was, that was private, and then the Slinkard Cemetery, it's a public, and then there's one go out through, go out to Scotland Road, Newberry Road, and there's one six way back a lane that we maintain as well.
Do you maintain the one out, um?
Bogart Bottoms.
Yeah.
I've looked for it, I can't find it.
I think it's somewhere up.
Well, then sometime, you take me, we can get together and run out to, 'cause I went out there, 'cause the cemetery commission, they asked me about it, I'm like, I, I can't. And I'll say, just kind of slip somebody when I think about it, once in a while, but other than that. Other than that, that's all I've got.
It is about a hundred feet east, so when you pull in, it got like a little water tension degree with the ninety. About a hundred feet east on the...
Right inside.
Right inside, up on hill.
And I've looked for it, I apparently haven't looked enough.
Yeah, I've looked around, I've got it.
I'll have to, cause outside, I try to maintain them the best I can.
Yeah.
So, I know the one out on Scotland Road, it, it's tough to get to when they plant it, cause they plant so damn tight, you can hardly get up there and mow, but, so... But other than that, that is all I have, so...
Interesting.
We should know about that soon.
But, yeah, we can...
Lucky they know.
Yeah.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
You're welcome, so, I just would rather see the money get put to use here than...
Yeah, absolutely.
Is it taken away?
Yep, or, and if I don't...
Use for something that you...
That we have no control over.
Right.
Yeah. So...
Yeah, we could come up with millions of dollars of projects, if you, if you thought you, you need us to do that.
Going up that kinda money, I don't have that kinda money, but, you know, we've been pretty true with our money.
We, we have too.
I try to, I try not to just blow, you know, all of a sudden give to the fire department as much as possible and...
It's just always scary to spend all your money then need it for something you didn't anticipate.
It is, you know, and that's, cause I know you guys worked with some turnout gear and stuff like that a couple of times for new firefighters, you know, I like having that money reserved for, you know, truck tires, or, you know, or whatever.
You stand alone.
Whatever, you know, whatever it may be, so... But yeah, that's my, my plan is three years, probably break it down into three sections, probably spend some money at the park, you know, lights, electric, you know, cause of the festival and stuff like that, and then...
We paid the water bill for the festival.
Okay.
So we, we, the town donated that.
Okay, good.
But we actually paid for it out of our three ninety-nine pound, um, promotion of town.
Yeah, promotion of town, right.
Yeah, that's, so...
But it gets shut off.
For the winter re-shut off.
It, it's shut off, and then they let us know when we're gonna need it back on.
Need it back on.
That's sort of us, we're trying to help, even though the town doesn't own it, none of it.
Well, that's something I, I gave, this year I gave, I think thirty-five, right at thirty-five thousand to the park, and they bought new equipment, real nice playground equipment, and I think gonna give that same amount, same dollar amount next year, and they're gonna buy some more equipment and do some other stuff, I think put a fence up, privacy fence or something, and...
They get a lot of traffic there, there's people there all the time.
And that was kinda something that I was thinking was maybe some new lights, you know, L E D lighting for the park, you know, safety for one, and then the electrical and stuff, I mean... So just, whatever we came to help.
I think that's the only park in the entire township, isn't it?
It is, yeah. That, that I'm aware of, yes.
Is it considered a private park?
It is.
It is, it's a private.
It's a private park.
It is a private park, but it's very widely used. There's people that drive from Owen and Bloomfield to use it just because it's...
Yeah.
Safer.
My goal, my goal is to continue to improve it and it be a nice park, and people know, you know, that it's a nice park, and that's the one thing we have room for still, so, still got a nice park.
Okay.
So, good, if you think of anything, drop that in the...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
He has to stay around here, but you can, you need to go, do something, do it.
You have any upcoming needs, especially working on water towers?
Mm-hmm. I hope he sends me that information.
What are you looking for, a copy of the Senate Bill, or?
Yeah, not at the moment, but yeah, I wanna...
Here in a minute or so, I'm gonna have to stop this recording, cause I don't think we can go over an hour and it's still upload, and then we can restart it.
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect. And I did set up a town of Newberry Clerk Pleasure YouTube channel. Just for the videos, upload there to keep them there more permanently, and I do have it linked on the Facebook page, so, I don't know what the link is allowable on YouTube, but we'll, we'll see if we can push our limits.
Okay.
But I know...